Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Thai Assistant Commissioner and Reporter. It is Wednesday, February 8th. Man, what an exciting afternoon in all ready. I'll tell you what.
That's not the cheerleading here.
There you go. First of all, let me take a second to thank each and every one of you for being patient for the past hour and a half while we get the power restored. But more importantly, I want to thank all of the men and women of the city of Tallahassee who just really busted it for the past hour and a half to do this. These things do happen, and we are lucky to have the number one public utility of the nation and great men and women and, you know, our technology services. Everybody had a role to play. We certainly do appreciate it. So without further ado, let's go ahead and get the meeting into order. I would like to invite Pastor Quincy Griffin of the Family Worship and Pray Center. Please come join us for the invocation. Pastor, thank you so much. Would you stand for the invocation?
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone else for having me today. Let us pray. Father, we just start off by giving your name praise, honor, and glory because, Lord, it's your will for us to have this meeting, so it's your will for those lights to come on. So we say thank you, Lord, and let that be an indicator of the lights that are going to come on in Tallahassee, the areas that need your light, your love, your guidance. Let the lights come on in 2023. Lord, I thank you for your power that's in this meeting.
And I thank you for the mayor and all of the commissioners that you have elected, anointed, and appointed and assigned for this city. We pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to rest upon them. Go with them. Don't let them lead by themselves. You said in your word, unless you keep a city, the watchmen watch in vain. So we know they're not watching in vain. We thank you for every initiative, every program, everything you have planned that is great for this city of Tallahassee because we know if you're in it, anything is possible. Eyes haven't seen, ears haven't heard, the things you plan for us. So, Lord, we thank you. We know darkness has no place, and we know the enemy has not one. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you so much for starting us off right. Folks, the lights still may flicker a little bit, but we're going to keep moving forward. Mr. Manager, I am assuming that we are streaming live. If not, for the record, we are recording and obviously will rebroadcast.
Yes, sir. We're recording the meeting, and we're working as we speak to make sure it's streaming as well.
Okay, excellent. Do we have any agenda modifications for today?
Yes, sir. Item 1201, which was an update on the noise ordinance, that's been pulled to be brought back at a later date. We're going to work a little bit more on that with the citizens and the businesses that have engaged on that topic.
Okay, so 12.01 has been pulled from the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I was a comment. It's been a long time on this noise ordinance. I think people are anxious to see us take up the discussion. I don't know what is causing the delay, but I think it's imperative we get it done ASAP.
Absolutely. And I know that the city manager and city attorney are continuously working on this item together. Okay, with that, we have four presentations today. I'd like to ask my colleagues to please come join me for these presentations because they are absolutely special. And I want to thank each and every one of you again for waiting an hour and a half while we get everything settled. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege, and I would like to ask the national championship Florida State University co-ed cheerleading squad to please come forward. I cannot tell you how proud we are of you for this amazing feat. I mean, bringing home the hardware. I see that you got your national championship medals. You ordered the rings last night. You got the hardware. Hey, this is fantastic. Not only do you represent yourselves and the university, but you represent the city of Tallahassee, and we are very, very proud. Come on over. Don't be afraid. Come on over. Come on over. Coaches, come join us, please. Dustin, I'm going to give you about two minutes to figure out who's going to speak on behalf of the team here as I read this proclamation. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the city of Tallahassee is honored to be home of the Florida State University Seminoles, and whereas the Florida State University Small Coed Cheerleading Team was crowned the UCA 2023 Coed National Champions, and whereas this is the first time the Florida State University Small Coed Cheerleading Team has won a national title for Florida State University, and whereas the Florida State University Coed Cheerleading Team was the only team in their division to hit zero, no deductions and no falls on both days of the competition, and whereas the Florida State University Small Coed Team demonstrated the unconquered spirit that has guided many Seminoles to succeed in their future endeavors, and whereas the city of Tallahassee is proud to have a group of accomplished student athletes representing our great city on the collegiate level. Now therefore, I, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the Florida State University Small Coed Cheerleading Team for representing Florida State University and the city of Tallahassee at the UCA 2023 Coed National Champions, written to the record and witness of each and every one of you, signed with my signature dated February 8th, 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, your national chance. Who's representing the team for some comments, or Dustin, or who?
And would you explain to us what small co-ed means?
great. At this time, I would like to invite the mayor pro tem to present the next proclamation.
So, small co-ed, as you can see, we have five guys up here, so it's a combination of the females and the male athletes on the team.
Thank you, Mayor.
So there's a couple of different aspects to go into.
And we would like to ask the executive director of the Tallahassee Urban League and other
We have all-girl groups, that's a four-person group, so it's back spot, two bases, and
staff members of the Urban League to join us.
a top girl, and then the guys.
Great stuff.
A proclamation for Black History Month.
We're very proud of you.
Let's celebrate Black History.
And I got to tell you on a personal note, I had, even with the lights out, I had so
All right. Mr. Curtis Taylor.
much fun hanging out. Learning about you.
On a personal note, let me just say thank you, Mr. Taylor, for all that you and the
Y'all got to meet cool people.
Urban League are doing in our community to make a difference.
It's been a real treat and everything. Thank you very much.
You really are making a difference.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Whereas, the contributions of African-Americans have helped shape and mold the rich history
Come on, man.
Congratulations.
of our nation, and whereas African-American History Week, celebrated in February, was created in 1926 in the United States by historian Carter G. Woodson, and whereas Black History Month was first recognized by President Gerald Ford in 1976, and whereas the Tallahassee Urban League, founded in 1969, I was in first grade, is an affiliate of the National Urban League and is a community-based organization dedicated to empowering communities and changing lives in the areas of counseling, education, health, housing, jobs, and civil rights, and whereas the Tallahassee Urban League's mission is to enable African-Americans and others to ensure, to secure social justice, economic self-reliance, parity, power, evolving opportunities, and civil rights, and whereas the city of Tallahassee continues to work towards a more diverse and inclusive city for all. Now therefore, he, John E. Daly, by the authority vested in him as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize February as Black History Month, as we continue to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans not only this month, but throughout the entire year.
On behalf of our board, our staff, our supporters, our citizens, and especially our clients, we want to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for not only recognizing Black History Month, but recognizing the Tallahassee Urban League during Black History Month. From Mayor Ford to Mayor Daly, the city commissioners have been a partner of the Tallahassee Urban League for over 47, 46 years. And during that time, we together, we set a historical milestone mark in 2019, and we rehabbed a thousand houses. Let's give them a big round of applause. And then as we fast forward, the city of Tallahassee just awarded also a million-dollar contract to the Tallahassee Urban League to rehab houses in Frenchtown, which is very much needed. So when we think about Ms. Johnson, we think about Ms. Sally Sue. We think about all those other individuals that are low-income citizens on a fixed income, and it's raining on them. So on behalf of our clients, we thank you. We want to thank CRA staff, John Baker, Ashley, and then we also want to thank Dr. Kimball Thomas for now working with us to provide some additional resources so that we're not only rehabbing houses, but we are transforming Frenchtown. And so here again, we thank you, Mayor. We thank the city of Tallahassee. We thank our commissioners. We thank you. We thank you. We thank you. We can't thank you enough. God bless.
Excellent. Curtis, let's get a picture. Good. Now my honor to recognize Commissioner Curtis Richardson for a proclamation on behalf of the United Way.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor to read this and present this proclamation to the United Way of the Big Ben, and we would ask Ms. Bernice Cox, Dr. Michelle Mitchum, and others from your board, I understand, are here. Bernice?
No.
Just the two of you. Okay, all right. All right, y'all are representing well. And the proclamation reads, whereas on February 11th, 1943, nine concerned citizens chartered United Way of Leon County for the purpose of raising and distributing funds to charitable and character-building agencies, and whereas in 1990, United Way of Leon County broadened its scope to incorporate seven neighboring counties and change the name to United Way of the Big Ben, and whereas United Way over the past 80 years has remained true to its founding goals to support human service programs in the Big Ben region, helping those living in poverty and the ALIS population, asset limited, income constrained, employed. That says a lot, and I could remember that. And creating collaboration strategies that result in long-lasting positive change, and whereas United Way of the Big Ben is a trusted leader for addressing our community's most vital concerns and impacting the root causes of poverty, focusing on creating access to attainable housing and safe neighborhoods, steady, affordable, quality childcare, early education and literacy, providing consistent safety net services during times of financial stress, focusing on access to affordable health and mental health services, and promoting and assisting in developing skills to meet future employment needs. And whereas the mission of raising awareness, mobilizing resources, and finding collaborative, targeted solutions to support families, individuals, and a thriving community through leadership, accountability, integrity, focus, and respect. Now again, therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Saturday, February 11th, 2023, as United Way of the Big Ben Day in the city of Tallahassee, and urge all citizens to continue to support United Way of the Big Ben and encourage Tallahassee residents to support efforts to help their neighbors so that we may all enjoy a high quality of life in Tallahassee now and into the future. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Tallahassee to be affixed and assigned by our mayor, John Daly, on this, the eighth day of February 2023. Bernice?
Thank you all so much. Bernice, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please remind.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Richardson, thanks so much for this honor, and to each of the commissioners. On behalf of United Way of the Big Ben Board of Directors, I would like to thank each of you for the work you do every single day in this city. I know it's a lift sometimes, and I know you each are made for the lift, so please know that United Way of the Big Ben appreciates the service and the work you do. We also appreciate the collaboration, the partnership that we have with the city of Tallahassee. We talk about 80 years. I can only imagine that 80 years we've had a strong partnership with our city of Tallahassee, and that continues today. I also want to give recognition to the great staff and team that work with us. We really appreciate that. The positive experience that we have with your staff each and every day is just incredible, and so a big, huge thank you to everyone on your team. We are, again, as you know, our mission is to make sure that we are taking care and addressing the impacts and the needs of those in our city and county that live in poverty and the edge of poverty, in that ALIS population, and we are passionate about that, as are each of you. So thank you so much for this extreme honor and this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a picture? All right, and I'm going to ask our colleagues to stay with us just for one more very special presentation, representing the Honor Flight organization for a presentation here today. I would like to invite, and very rarely do we get this incredible opportunity, we have the former sheriff, Mike Wood, please come forward, representing Honor Flight, and the former mayor, Tom Napier, please come forward too. I always laugh and call Tom the mayor of Woodgate, but what you might not know is he actually is a former mayor of his community in Florida before coming to Tallahassee. And once a mayor, always a mayor. Absolutely. Gentlemen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to please, I'm Tom Napier, I'm vice chairman of Honor Flight. Mike Woods behind me, he's a board member, and we as board members and also Honor Flight would like to make a presentation to the mayor and all the city commissioners for their support, for all the support they do for Honor Flight all these years. We started this thing in 1972, and we're up and going, and we got another flight on the 29th of April, which just means it's our ninth flight. And this time, I'll take it over president, I say, Mayor, I want you to open this letter, please, sir. This is from Mike Kemp, the chairman of the board. We have 12 board members, and all of them support the Honor Flight Tallahassee. Don't be nervous. Yeah. Want to read it?
Thank you. I appreciate it. December 27th, 2022, Dear Mayor Daly, we want to take this time to sincerely thank you for your support of Honor Flight Tallahassee. Your ongoing support has helped us achieve our goals of honoring our war veterans for over 10 years now. You taking the time to acknowledge the service and sacrifice of those veterans for so long ago means more than you could possibly imagine. We are working hard on our next flight with 80 more veterans, and it will happen on Saturday, April 29th, 2023. We hope that we might see you again on that day. We hope that you have a great new year, and we want to thank you for all that you do every day for our veterans. Sincerely, Matt Kemp, chairman. Thank you. Oh, wow. Thank you so much.
All right, and here comes the best. I got something from the board of directors from Honor Flight to Mayor Daly, and we don't know what we get to get through the front gate downstairs. We want you to open it up, please. I've been carrying that thing around with me ever since.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Wow. Thanks.
Oh, wow. Well, on behalf of the city, I truly am honored to accept this. This is absolutely amazing, you know? The city of Tallahassee truly supports Honor Flight. It's an incredible program, and this is wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mike. Really do appreciate it. That was great. That was great. Can we get a picture? Picture? Mike, you want to stick?
Well, I just wanted to briefly say it's a privilege to be on Honor Flight and support the people that gave the ultimate sacrifice to secure our very freedoms to be here today. So the city of Tallahassee supporting Honor Flight is a gift, but it's something we genuinely appreciate for the opportunity to demonstrate our appreciation to those. Thank you all for being here.
Excellent. Come on. Okay, do we have any announcements, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Excellent. Do we have any appearances by other governing boards, appointed boards?
No, sir. We do not.
Excellent. We are on the consent agenda. Have any of the consent agenda items been removed?
No, sir.
Move acceptance of consent agenda.
All right, consent agenda's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 10.01, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me just one second to pull the item up. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has three positions where their term expires December 31st, 2022. So to fill those seats, we have two individuals scheduled for, recommended for reappointment, and one new member. Those returning members would be Michelle Mickles and Jesse Jones. Each is eligible to serve for another term and would serve for terms that go through December 31st of 2025, as would the newly appointed individual, Christian Griffith. As you well know, that board has certain seats that are required to be filled by people who fit certain profiles and descriptions, and that's been accomplished with this. So staff recommendation is to reappoint Michelle Mickles and Jesse Jones and to appoint Christian Griffith.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson is our representative on the A-hack. I'm coming to you for comments, direction.
I would move staff recommendation for option number one.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 11.02 is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-02, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee updating the capital improvement element of the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for separability and conflicts and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-02 and set the first and only public hearing for February 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor?
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, is it seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 11.3, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03 is introduction of ordinance number 23-23-Z-01, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Capitol Circle Office Complex Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on approximately 341 acres along Capitol Circle, southeast between Blairstone Road and Tram Road on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action has been changed on this agenda item to reflect a modification of the public hearing date at the applicant's request. All notices required by the code will be resent. The amended option, option one is introduce ordinance number 23-Z-01 and set the first and only public hearing for April 26th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor, with the recommended amendment.
It has been properly moved with the recommended amendment by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have any other introduction of ordinances this evening, Madam Attorney?
No, we do not.
We're under policy formation and direction 12.02, the vacant property registration. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item provides an analysis of ordinance programs and models of peer cities throughout the state for addressing adverse effects of vacant and unmaintained property. Staff is seeking your approval to move forward with the development of an ordinance that will create a registration process for properties that fall into foreclosure. This will allow staff to access the most current contact information for the property owner and mortgagee, so property maintenance issues can be addressed. It'll also be a database and a resource to highlight future development opportunities in the community. A number of departments have worked on this. Dr. Kimball Thomas has the lead. He's joined by John Reddick and Adam Jacobs. I'd like Kimball to share just a few more details about how this could work, what we envision, and seek your approval to move forward with an ordinance.
Excellent. Dr. Thomas?
Mayor Daly, respective commissioners, city manager goad, respective appointed officials, our general public, you see the background information in your packet information that you have. This particular ordinance would give us an opportunity, number one, with my next slide, it will provide the tool for us to minimize blight within our communities and that aligns with HUD's national objectives with the Community Development Block Grants that we receive from HUD, with our Home Assistance Program Grants, with our Emergency Solutions Grant that we receive. We are required by HUD to make sure that we reduce and minimize blight as much as we possible with these funds. Such an ordinance would give us an opportunity to enhance that and strengthen that. It also aligns with our city strategic plan objectives for voluntary code compliance. I have Adam Jacobs, our Resiliency and Sustainability Manager, with me, and Adam can and provided an effective date. Recommended action has been changed on this agenda item to reflect the modification of the public hearing date at the applicant's request. All notices required by the code will be resent. The amended option, option one is introduce ordinance number 23-Z- 01 and set the first and only public hearing for April 26, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor, with the recommended amendment.
It has been properly moved with the recommended amendment by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other introduction of ordinances this evening, Madam Attorney?
No, we do not.
We're under policy formation and direction, 12.02, the vacant property registration. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item provides an analysis of ordinance programs and models of peer cities throughout the state for addressing adverse effects of vacant and unmaintained property. Staff is seeking your approval to move forward with the development of an ordinance that will create a registration process for properties that fall into foreclosure. This will allow staff to access the most current contact information for the property owner and mortgagee, so property maintenance issues can be addressed. It'll also be a database and a resource to highlight future development opportunities in the community. A number of departments have worked on this. Dr. Kimball Thomas has the lead. He's joined by John Reddick and Adam Jacobs. I'd like Kimball to share just a few more details about how this could work, what we envision, and seek your approval to move forward with an ordinance.
Excellent. Dr. Thomas.
Mayor Daley, respective commissioners, City Manager Goad, respective appointed officials, our general public, you see the background information in your packet information that you have. This particular ordinance would give us an opportunity, number one, with my next slide, it will provide the tool for us to minimize blight within our communities, and that aligns with HUD's national objectives with the Community Development Block Grants that we receive from HUD, with our Home Assistance Program Grants, with our Emergency Solutions Grant that we receive. We are required by HUD to make sure that we reduce and minimize blight as much as we possible with these funds. Such an ordinance would give us an opportunity to enhance that and strengthen that. It also aligns with our city strategic plan objectives for voluntary code compliance. I have Adam Jacobs, our Resiliency and Sustainability Manager, with me, and Adam can tell you that there probably is not a day doesn't go by that we're having conversations, how our resiliency officers, and I want to give them credit, I'd be remiss if I did not, how they work day to day to make sure that we get neighbors and neighborhoods to understand not only resiliency and sustainability in neighborhood, but how we go through making sure that we enforce codes and make sure we get voluntary compliance. So it's aligned with our strategic plan objectives. And it would give us a database as they register into their properties, that we can be in direct contact with the mortgagee, make sure that we're having those conversations so they can keep those properties up. It brings more value to the neighborhoods and also increase the property values, as I foresaid, and it highlights potential redevelopment opportunities that we will have from our office to make sure we continue the narrative and make sure we can have a very vibrant neighborhood. Those are the highlights of this item. We're recommending option one with respect to this item, that you give us an opportunity to prepare ordinance that create this registration and the processes for properties and foreclosures. And John Reddick here with our Director of Growth Management has also played a vital part in this conversation, and he and Mr. Jacobs and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions before we get to public comment? Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, would this ordinance that you all are proposing, as in the peer cities that I'm familiar with?
Right.
That have done something similar, create a source of revenue that we could possibly use, not against property owners, but those banks and lending institutions that are the owner as a result of foreclosure, to generate a source of potential revenue? My intent would be for it to go into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Absolutely. That's certainly been part of the discussion, and what we see for those municipalities, that very well could happen.
Okay.
All right, question. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Porter.
Actually, I can wait until after public comment.
Okay. How many speakers do we have on the side?
Zero.
Okay, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. Okay, I just had a few questions. So for the option one, does staff have an opinion at this point about the kind of model you're interested in? I see there's, you know, the hybrid model. I think the hybrid model makes sense. I think having as many, you know, ways to be notified and trigger this process, the better for minimizing blight. So do you have any ideas at this point about the model you prefer?
We're in those discussions with staff and other municipalities about which one has been more effective from the ones that are in place now.
Okay. And how exactly would we enforce this, especially, you know, the vacancy and abandonment model?
Anna, would you like to kind of talk on the process of how we currently look at code and what we try to do with respect to voluntary compliance and making sure enforcement takes place?
Right now, when we can't locate a property owner, we go through a number of avenues. It can be obviously looking at Leon County Property Appraisers, but we'll talk to nearby neighbors. So any number of methods to try to get ahold of people if there's nobody at the property, obviously can be a bit of a challenge. So we take those steps. This would be an opportunity to make a more streamlined process. So that's what we'd be looking to do, is to streamline the overall process.
Okay, and it's just either complaint-driven or coming from a code enforcement officer? As far as how do we know that a property has been vacant for a certain amount of time?
Not necessarily complaint-driven with that. Our overall complaints, when we hear about a code violation, that's complaint-driven. We'll field those calls or emails or what have you and go and visit the property owner. But for the vacant property, people do complain to us about vacant properties. It's often an opportunity for illegal dumping or other types of activity that you don't want in your neighborhood. So we will field complaints on that, but the process would go a step beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. I guess my first question is, what problem are we trying to solve?
Well, we have issues where we have property that's not registered, and you have a hard time trying to find the actual owner and who the mortgagee might be. This would give us a chance to have that registry, so we can create that database. We can begin to have the conversation about any violations or potential violations and making sure that property comes in compliance, is not the blight and the other things that we see in some of our areas.
Okay. And if we're having a hard time contacting a property owner, how will they be contacted to know that they should go register?
The clerk of the court, if a bank has already filed a foreclosure, then that would give us some additional information as well.
Okay. I guess I'm a little bit out of the lot for what the actual then purpose of this would be. I heard Commissioner Richardson's comments. I understand, you know, that avenue of it, but it just seems like bureaucracy for bureaucracy's sake, and there's not a real underlying issue that we're trying to solve. I know we talked about rental registries in the past, I think, you know, maybe at the retreat, where if you have a rental property at all, you're on some sort of registry to make sure it's always in code compliance. So I'm really trying to wrap my head around what the actual purpose is. I know that there are several. So if we did set up a database, that would be managed in-house, or would we be looking for a vendor to set that up?
We would have the register, we have access to it through the clerk of the courts, and also at the same time, too, with those property owners. Again, we get an opportunity to make sure that that property gets cleaned up, that property stays in compliance with code, and that we, again, eliminate blight in the community and add value to that property for us looking at it in the future for what it might be useful for, for other purposes.
Okay, and that would only be properties that have entered into foreclosure?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
If I could speak on point, Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Richardson and I attended a conference last year where in other cities, they're doing this. And the reason they're doing this is because Dr. Thomas mentioned blight in the neighborhoods and in the communities, but many times, banks are owning these properties, and they're letting them, letting, you know, the weeds and grass grow up and become a real problem in the neighborhoods. I've actually had constituents who are trying to find owners of properties for us to find out later on, after much searching, that it was owned by a bank, and they just need them to come by and mow the grass, you know, to keep the neighborhood looking good. So it's more than just that, it's for safety purposes. Some of our elders have indicated that these houses are, these properties are growing up, and there could be things living or growing in there that they might not want there. So here's an opportunity, as some of the other cities express. If banks are owning these, then banks need to maintain and keep these communities clear and safe. So this is, it's no silver bullet, but we gotta, you know, this is an opportunity to try something. And of course, if they are not doing that, then of course, there is a, you know, an income opportunity here for them to be fine. And, you know, banks are in the habit of charging fees and not necessarily paying fees, so there's an opportunity to turn the tables on them, so maybe they'll mow the grass in the neighborhood.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I'll follow up on that comment, then, just out of curiosity. How many code enforcement cases per year do we have where we can't contact the owner because of a blighted property with overgrown grass that's bank-owned? You have that data?
Have you got an estimate for us?
The resilience officers reach out to me every day. I hear about these issues several times a week, where it's a challenge to get ahold of the property owner for any number of reasons, but oftentimes, you know, it is tied to, oh, it turns out it was owned by this, you know, by a bank or an investor or what have you.
And wherever we go, when we, if we're bringing this ordinance back or what have you, I'm just curious to really figure out those, now, what are we trying to solve? Is there a real underlying issue where it's so pervasive that we're pushing for this? Or if not, that's what I'm just trying to gain more understanding of. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, and as the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, our interest was piqued in this at that initial meeting a year or so ago, and I've had some follow-up conversations with others, and apparently, it can serve as a source of income for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I mean, whatever that amount is, apparently, it's working in, I think even the county has an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, but it is working in other municipalities in the state. So we wanted to just give it a try and see what we could get out of it. We know that affordable housing is one of our top priorities as a community, and this is just an opportunity for us to generate some revenue, not from property owners, but from those institutions, the lending institutions that are delinquent in taking care of properties that they own. It's an opportunity for us to generate some revenue for our trust fund and to provide services for those in the community who are in need of affordable housing.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea what kind of revenue is generated from programs like this in other places?
Commissioner, I don't have those exact numbers right now in front of me, but certainly we'll have staff look into that, and I'll get that information to the Office of the City Manager for your review.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
But beyond the income, as a resident of the South Side, let me just say this. There are a number of properties that are owned by banks due to foreclosure that have gone and become neglected and become eyesores in our communities. So whether we make a penny off of it or not, it is going to be to the benefit of keeping our neighborhoods looking like people live there and not all grown up, because banks don't come by to check on it. So we need them to come by. If you own the property, you need to come by and make sure that it's clear. So that's my driving force. When I first heard about it, I was thinking, of course, we need to make sure that our neighborhoods look like other neighborhoods in other places, and don't just come put up, you know, a foreclosure sign and then don't come back, and just let it grow up and become an eyesore and an unsafe place. So I'm in favor of this and will support it for that reason, and the income that may come from it is just a bonus. But more importantly, we want our communities to look like everybody else's community looks, and we need banks to come go cut grass.
Is that a motion for staff recommendation?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
It's properly moved, seconded, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, this wouldn't necessarily, and correct me if I'm wrong, change anything we're doing, because we're already, you know, we already have code enforcement that responds to these kinds of vacant properties. So this isn't, you know, in addition to what we're doing, it just creates a registry and it allows us to levy fines.
It's inclusive of that, Commissioner, but as well as, again, the database would give us an opportunity to build relationships with those mortgagees and whomever the holders are of this property, and it would give us an opportunity to have contact information. It would give us an opportunity, again, to make sure we're in compliance with our national, you know, housing and urban development goals as far as eliminating blight in our community. It enhances that narrative.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, for those listening, we are, you know, we are currently enforcing our code.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to support the motion. I guess what I was getting at is, Commissioners, I'd like to see those numbers when this comes back. How many vacant foreclosure properties are we trying to bring into compliance that we're missing, that this would be helpful for? How much potential revenue could this generate that other communities are seeing? You know, those things, I think, could build a case for why we should do this. I just, the idea of the ordinance, I failed to see what we're really trying to address. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there's a motion on the table for option number one, recommended by staff by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. We're on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to apply for the 2023 RACE grant. That's a grant, you will recall, you approved the application in 2022. The grant is the U.S. Department of Transportation Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant. Star Metro made the application for the South Side Transit Center. It was very competitive, made the final, but not, it was not awarded in the end. Staff has worked with USDOT to approve the application. We've continued forward with the project and the design, and we're asking your approval to, again, apply this year. In addition, we wanted to give you a check-in on where we stand with the South Side Transit Center, to kind of see where we are and hear those next steps. Jason Lawrence is here to provide the presentation. He's tagging in for Angela Baldwin, which you see so often, she's under the weather, but we're in good hands with Jason, and he'll give us an update on the grant and where we're headed with the South Side Transit Center.
Jason, great to see you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'd like to start off by giving you a brief update on where we are with the South Side Transit Center. Next slide, please. So we are about halfway through the conceptual design phase, and in the coming months, we look forward to getting back out in the community and getting feedback on that conceptual design. Once that design is completed later on this year, we will move forward with the groundbreaking in early 2024. Next slide. So here's just a map that shows you the placement of the South Side Transit Center, along with all the other initiatives that are going on in the area. There's a park across the street, as well as a multi-use trail that is being constructed by Blueprint. Next slide. So as the City Manager introduced, Star Metro seeks approval to apply for and expend funds for the Rebuilding America's Infrastructure Through Sustainability and Equity Grant, otherwise known as RACE, which is one of the many competitive grant programs that arose from the bipartisan infrastructure bill last year. So the RACE grant allows for project sponsors at the state and local level to obtain funding for multimodal transportation projects that are a bit more difficult to support through DOT's normal funding sources. RACE projects are selected on several areas of merit, and as you can see, those perfectly align with the city's strategic plan. And as the City Manager did mention, we did apply for this grant opportunity in 2022. And just to give you some context, there were over 900 applications that were submitted. 303 of those, including Star Metro's, made it to the Secretary's desk, and 166 of those were eventually awarded. And since then, we've worked to revamp our application by working with our partners across the city, as well as with our city consultant, ICF, to firm up the application. Next slide. So if awarded, the RACE grant will achieve the strategic plan objective of constructing the South Side Transit Center by 2024. Next slide. Anton could conclude. Our application is seeking up to $20 million in total, with the cost shares demonstrated before you, and today, we seek approval to submit the application and expend the funds upon awarding.
Mr. Manager. Excellent. Thank you, Jason. Let me, I want to connect this back to a question Commissioner Richardson, you asked earlier at the workshop about, you know, seeking dollars, and you heard that we believe we have a good opportunity at the federal level. This is one of those projects where we believe that to be true. We're ready. It's with the direction of the commission. We've done a lot of work. We feel very confident, the federal government has confidence in us, that we've got a plan. We've got an almost complete design, and it exactly meets what we believe their objective is and the City Commission's objective. And so I think the timing is appropriate, and I just wanted to connect that back to your question about how we're searching for these dollars that are available.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, okay. Oops. Okay. So are we applying, are we essentially submitting the same or a similar application that we did previously?
No. So the new application has a couple of other components that, again, we're working with our consultants to make sure that we address. We have explored some other options in terms of amenities to eventually add to the South Side Transit Center, and those amenities will be included as a part of this application.
Okay, but it's still, we're still talking about construction for the South Side Transit Center?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And do we have, I see there's the matching funds. This is something we've already accounted for? Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Actually, Jason probably can answer it better. I believe it was in two parts, Blueprint dollars, which we do have accounted for, and a million dollars from the city.
That's correct.
Which we have reserved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment on the side, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Jason, you've done a wonderful job.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you so much.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Second. Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other business come before the city commission this evening?
No, sir.
All right, we are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I have four speakers this evening. The first will be Mike Goldstein. As he comes forward, I'll, I think each of our speakers may have been here before, but remind you that you'll have three minutes for remarks. And the light in front of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem will start off green and ultimately turn yellow and then red when your time's expired.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Mike Goldstein, 217 West Second Avenue. Happy February, I guess, we're back to the monthly meetings. I think back in December, Mr. Mayor, you had said that you support the arts with the coke on unrestricted funding. So I'm just trying to make everyone aware that on April 1st, not a joke, I saw the paper, Brattle Blues Club is closing. So I'm sure it's still a history with the culture there, too. But I still see the warehouse on Gaines Street vacant and not torn down yet. So how do we, as a community, come together and preserve that as a possible historical and cultural marker to bring people here year-round for economic development, which is right in the middle of college town, in between both universities? So how can we still save the warehouse with the Brattle Blues Club closing in a few months? So that's my big, real thing to see about because as it still stands, it's not torn down yet. And it was brought up a few years ago as student housing, but they left town and it's just still unfortunate and eyesore, but a cultural icon as well. So I'd like to see something or at least an answer of like what's going to happen with the warehouse when it's just staying there as a building that's basically getting appreciated every time it's not being looked at for anything. So that's what I'd ask is maybe something could come of it, a community center, something to bring people there, like community projects to clean up the area around it because it's right in between the developments around it and it's literally just sitting there waiting for something to happen. So that's my main thing for that. But the rest of my time is, with session coming up, the other concern I still have is the off-duty police activity or lack thereof because of the fact that the system changed after COVID. So now it's not on the control of the venues anymore. The city took over and it's a third-party app. So what's the next step for that when something, God forbid, happens that's too late to stop? Because is the fault on the venue for not offering enough to incentivize the police to come out? Or is it on the city for taking too long to get to the actual consequence of what happens from that? So what does that look like in a few months when the session comes and after hours from City Hall and from the Capitol, they come down to places that have been known to frequent those people over the years? What do we do to help prevent things that could happen before they get too late? So I'm trying to figure out for my sake, I see this a lot when I'm out, but what's the solution for getting a unified option to prevent something that could happen that makes the news and makes us national news, not just localized news? What does it look like going forward? Because we can't just keep letting things happen too late. Otherwise, it doesn't make the news because the time delay of police officers getting to these venues after hours doesn't help matters because then it makes the news and it makes the city look bad at that point. And we don't want that because we are top-rated for a lot of good things. But going forward, we need to figure out something to be amicable to the police force that we support and the venues that provide entertainment and
You have about 15 seconds.
I know, I see it. Just how do we get to the point of something that's compromiseable to help with public safety at night when now the system has changed over the years to become something that might even worse?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Freddie Miller, and then we'll hear from Cheryl Collier Brown.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm going with the greatest. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor Daley, Commissioners. Once again, I want to thank everybody for, thank you guys for the Martin Luther King Parade, once again, a great achievement. Next year, we want to include Florida State Band, but it is what it is. All right, I'm here to talk about gun control in Tallahassee. We got so many homicides and shootings going on every, just about every night. So I'm here to try to throw some ideas at you guys concerning ammunition control because I don't think we're going to ever get past the Second Amendment for its gun control. But if we limit the amount of ammunitions being sold, because this is a college town with probably over 50,000 or more kids here in this city during school season, high schools, middle schools, colleges, we have so many young people here. So that means that there's a lot of gangs around here. So what we need to do is limit the amount of ammunition being sold in the way they are being sold. Because most of these guns that are being used in these shootings are being stolen. So it's not the law-abiding citizens that are doing the shooting, but their weapons are being used in these shootings because they're not locking them up properly. So I think if we was to pass some type of referendum concerning the sales of ammo, and the only way you can buy ammo is because you have the registration for that weapon that you're buying the ammo for, just like you're buying a car, just like you steal a car, I can't buy a tag for it. So I think we need to look into some things like that. We got, this is not a new, you know, this is not new, this is an old way to do things because we got San Francisco passed this law with, where they tried to pass it, and where they got a limit on it to Senator Daniel Monahan, and then you got Representative Debbie Schultz that was involved with the Jamie Law down in Sunrise, Florida, also trying to do these things. So this is not a new, this is nothing new, it's just something that we need to implement here in Tallahassee because of the fact that we have so many young people here. I think that we could do some type of special session just because of the amount of young people we have here. Not only that, but we need to limit the amount of ammunition that's being sold even to gun owners, legal gun owners, because a lot of these people are stockpiling ammunition in their homes. And if their homes catch on fire, we could have like a mass shooting just because of the fire that started in their home. Because some of these guys got over 5,000 rounds. We need a red flag by ammunition online in this city.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller and I have had this conversation before, and I've asked the city attorney to provide some information in the past, and I thought I passed it on to Mr. Miller. But just in case I didn't, I'm going to ask, if I can ask the city attorney to advise us on this.
I'm attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city at one point did attempt to challenge the preemption that is in Florida statutes regarding firearms and ammunition. And the Florida Supreme Court advised us, as it is stated in the statute, that there is a total preemption to the state or any regulations involving firearms or ammunition. And so we are precluded from even, you are entertaining such legislation, which could possibly expose you to fines.
Mr. Miller, I'm afraid that we are preempted by the state of Florida Legislature. Under the previous administration, there was a law passed in the Florida Legislature that says that all local governments not only cannot entertain any legislation on the local level in regards to guns or ammunition, we had to remove all local ordinances of books. The city attorney just mentioned that Tallahassee joined in with other cities, challenged this new law in court through the years. And just recently, it's gone before Florida Supreme Court, and unfortunately, the municipalities lost. As of right now, the way how the state law says, as the city attorney just mentioned, we are preempted, we are not allowed to implement any local laws in regards to firearms or ammunition towards any municipality in the state of Florida.
Okay, thank you very much. But I think that we was to try to go towards an emergency order or something in that way because of the number of homicide, number of kids. But anyway, anyway, I thought I throw that at you guys. Thank you for your time.
I encourage you to go across the street, beginning March 1st, legislative session. You go over there and throw these ideas at them, they are the ones who can do something about it.
Yes. And at this point, are considering an open carry no permit law for Florida. So that addresses your issue across the street. We're all with you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Cheryl Collier Brown, followed by Michael McLoughlin.
Collier Brown, it's great to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, Reese, the manager, good. Okay. I came up to thank your city employees. We were having a problem with a vacant property, which will give you an example why we need what Kim and them had come up and asked for. We have this house that was next door, no utilities, no lights, no nothing. They were coming over to the hub utilizing our lights, our water, et cetera. So we were going back and forth trying to find out who owned it. But through their due diligence, they found out. Came over, they passed that day, thank you, Jesus, it's cleaned up. They were cleaning up, and I stopped, and I thanked the gentleman, and they were cleaning up outside. I came up here purposely to thank them in person over there so they'll know that I appreciate what is being done with that property over there. And I am so glad that you all, so that clarify, they had a hard time at first locating the person because it was in probate or whatever, but it's done. And I guess when I ride back there, it'll be peace in heaven because now the hub has a clean slate next door. And I want to thank you all publicly, Reggie, everybody who did the due diligence for us and the police department, because I called a nice one to do a ride back to make sure they weren't over there trespassing in the evening time. So I just, when my mama say, you give people their flowers so y'all can smell them, so there they are for you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Michael McLoughlin, and that's the last speaker I have, Mayor. I don't
Michael McLoughlin.
Has spoken before, I don't see him.
McLoughlin.
There's more.
Last speaker.
We have more coming. Come on forward, I know you're waiting. Name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us.
Hey, hello, everyone. Trying to catch my breath, I just ran in here. The power outage had me mess up a little bit. My name is Greg Martinez. I am a resident of Tallahassee. And I do apologize, I do not have the materials for you all. I wanted to present you all with the images. But if you all could help me, could you identify this item, please, and Commissioners or Mr. Mayor?
The city of Tallahassee logo.
It is the city, yes, thank you, Commissioner Richardson. It is the city of Tallahassee logo. Unfortunately, though, that is the first thing that comes to mind when we do see this image. But with the white background and the blue coin, that's also the city of Tallahassee's flag. And I think it's a pretty boring flag. We used to have another pretty boring flag with a white background that this flag replaced. We have a bicentennial celebration coming up. This doesn't look like the flag of a city that's been the state's capital for 200 years. I just thought, you know, maybe when we have some time to consider bringing a new design, maybe open up a competition amongst the public or just something. Because if we're going to reflect on 200 years of our city's history, look forward, look inward and just see where we are as a city, something besides this would be a great example to, you know, help reflect our values, what we hope to achieve, where we've been. I have other examples which I can bring up to you all so that you can see them. This was the city of Tallahassee flag that our other generic flag replaced. It's the tri-colored star logo that first came about in 2002. That replaced this 1986 flag, which we see a lot of manhole covers have this logo. This flag came before it, and we had this flag back in the 50s. I think there may have been one flag prior to this one. This was designed by a, I guess, the head of the art department at Florida State College of Women. But just another great example of how the community was able to come together and design something that looks better than, you know, something that you would see on the side of a city truck or a water tower, which this is a great logo.
You have about 15 seconds.
It works great for a logo, but for a 200-year-old city, I think we can do better. Just something to consider. Thank you.
I love the idea. Not the first time we've heard it, that we should have even a public contest and get the community involved to redesign the flag. So we take your comments seriously, and let's see where we can go with it. Thanks for coming, appreciate it. I had never seen the history of all of the flags that you presented today as well. That's pretty cool. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
I do not have any other speakers.
All right, let's go to the sharing of ideas. Commissioner Porter, we'll start with you and work our way down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, just on the topic of the bicentennial, I wanted to share something that I heard from a resident, and I will direct him to maybe reach out to visit Tallahassee and the other groups that are, you know, working with them to coordinate. This resident really wanted to, you know, we all, I think, watched, and now I can't even remember the documentary, about Leon County's history of slavery and how significant it was compared to even other counties. And it was really important to him that that be, that our history in that sense be included. So I just wanted to put that out there, but I will direct him to speak to others. I did want to ask if we could, whether it's a motion, I really want to see if staff could bring back a, we talked about this at the retreat, a strategy for increasing the number of low-income and extremely low-income affordable housing units. I know there are a lot of plans and strategies we have currently, but I would love to see a targeted strategy. It doesn't have to be that, you know, that complicated or in-depth, but just whether there's specific grant opportunities, funding sources, whatever there is, I'd really like to see a way that we can increase those units, even if it's just a goal or, you know, how many units we think we can get in the next couple of years. So I don't know if that, you know, would require a motion. I would just love, even if it's just an informational item about maybe what other cities are doing, to target those or to increase those units. I would really like to see that.
Commissioner Porter, if you wouldn't mind, I know that's exactly what Commissioner Richardson and the Affordable Housing Advisory Council, they're working on this right now.
Okay.
And always thinking creatively on how to bring more units online. They should be producing a report for this year, a status update on where we are and where we're going. I think that would be the appropriate first start is with the advisory council and let them, it's our housing staff, obviously, that is working, bring their ideas before us for consideration.
Do we have any idea when that report will be made or coming completed?
I don't.
Okay.
And not only does the city have a committee
Right, the joint.
The county does, too.
Right.
We meet jointly in intervals as well. But that is something that we're working on, come up with that, that kind of information here with
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess to start off on Mr. Miller's point and Commissioner Richardson's as well, the legislature is considering this year, unlicensed concealed carry of firearms in our community, which is probably one of the most reckless proposals we've heard in the last, you know, few years. We are preempted. State and courts have ruled of our own implementation, but I do think we should have a conversation in our community of, we're the government that will bear the brunt of bad decisions. And what does that look like now? Right now in Florida, you can go purchase a gun from a private seller without any type of background check, and now if this passes, you'll be able to carry that wherever you want in a community that's grappling with gun violence, you know, already. I don't know if we can get this data or if law enforcement has an opinion on it, but how many guns that are being carried illegally right now in our community will be legalized overnight? overnight if that passes? How many people are concealing, carrying in our community with a legally acquired firearm, but illegally carrying it concealed around now? And now we're going to go ahead and overnight effectively legalize that? I mean, it's insane, it's reckless, and it's going to have real consequences on the people of Tallahassee. So I just wanted to say that. On a lighter note, I think this flag idea is a great conversation to have. I do remember, I think, six, eight years ago, there was a big talk about having a competition, I think, with the bicentennial coming up. Maybe that's something that Tallahassee could look at incorporating, having some sort of competition. I think that would be great, and I think it could build pride. I think the flag could look a lot better as well. And happy birthday, Mr. Cook. We're about to get out of here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson?
I didn't have anything. I would, though, if, I don't have any problems considering another flag, but I know that there was a process when that one was adopted. I don't know if they went out to the public with something, or, but I, because I wasn't involved directly at that point. So we want to make sure that, you know, we take that into consideration, if, in fact. But I think the idea of having to visit Tallahassee and the bicentennial committee, take a look at that, I totally support.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back to the fact that we did a proclamation earlier today for Black History Month, and I wanted to acknowledge that there are a number of activities that are happening in our community to highlight the contributions of many blacks, African-Americans, not only in this community, but in, across the world. There is a Tuskegee Airmen program that will be held on Sunday at Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church at 9:30 a.m. It is being sponsored by the MLK Foundation of Florida, and Dr. Brickler will be the historian who will be providing information regarding the Tuskegee Airmen. And I also know that Visit Tallahassee, COCA, and several others are also highlighting the Riley House, are also highlighting events that are taking place throughout the city. And I encourage all of us to go learn something, not just rely on soundbikes and others saying about what's a value and what's not a value, what's woke and what's not woke. Go and educate yourself, because as long as we are living, we should be learning, and we should be learning about each other. And so I'm just encouraging all of us, just because I'm black don't mean I know everything about all black people. I'm going to continue to learn as well. So I'm encouraging all of us to learn something this month, next month, the months after it, all year long. So I wanted to, wanted to say that. I also wanted to, did I see, I see Mr. Flanney in the audience, you all do a tremendous job in trying to keep our streets clean. But one of the places that I want to tell y'all that, and I know it's not us, I think it's them, and I'm, so I'm hoping that they're listening, that Magnolia, the place off of Magnolia, where my office away from the office is, you know, Village Inn. Those dumpsters out there, I don't know what they're doing. It looks like body bags out there. And I know, whenever I contact you, you all go over there and get it cleaned up, but somebody needs to make them clean that up over there. Because if you're having food places, you want people to come and eat there, it's kind of hard to do that when you see all this garbage that you're just putting out there, and it's not in the dumpsters, it's on the ground. And even, I just drove through the McDonald's and over to the Walgreens, it's like, somebody's not doing what they need to do over there. And so, get them, Reggie. Make them do what they're supposed to do. And thank you. Thank you for always, you know, going out there to try to keep us clean, but they need to help us. That's all I have.
Mr. Clerk, happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
So in closing, today's been a great day. We had a wonderful budget workshop earlier today, and once again, I want to thank the team that makes up our budget team for all the amazing work they do. This is a $1.2 billion operation of the city of Tallahassee. Robert, you and your team are absolutely phenomenal. But you know, it's also days like today that I'm just so proud to work every day with the fine men and women of Tallahassee. Hey, had a power outage downtown Tallahassee. It impacted streets, roads, traffic, courthouse, city in the middle of the day. Reese, your team did amazing job. And everybody, you know, everybody pulls together. It just makes me, makes me proud to be a part of the city of Tallahassee family. Please, in all departments, make sure that everybody knows how much we appreciate them working around the clock, really working hard this afternoon, keep everything running.
We will. Thank you.
With that, it is 5:52, and we stand adjourned.
All right. Yay.